Six thirty on Wednesday, February 17. Due to coronavirus pandemic, we need to be closing the public. They were just getting close to being closed. My video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Global Channel 9. Additionally, a recording of the meeting will be posted on West Bridgewater Community Access Video On Demand website. At HTTPS colon slash slash WB hyphen CAM dot org slash VOD slash. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is to appoint Valentina Heytadad as part-time Finance Committee Secretary.
Yep, so I believe that Valentina is with us. And so she is a senior, I believe, a senior at our high school. And we are in need of a secretary at the Finance Committee. We posted the position. She applied for it. And Linda Torres, as HR Director, met with her along with Jan Fox as the chairwoman of the Finance Committee. You are the Planning Board, the Personnel Board for the town. And so as a result, we would just be looking for your vote to ratify the decision to hire her. She would start tomorrow night. But she is here, in case you want to just say hi to her. And hopefully you take an affirmative vote and congratulate her on the position.
Hi, Valentina, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Does anyone have any questions for Valentina?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for filling this position for us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I was wondering what made you interested in the position?
Um, I honestly, I just applied because I thought, why not? It sounds like something good to do.
Well, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Valentina, do you have any questions for us?
Not really, no.
So I was on FinCon at one time and I was the secretary as well. And I had trouble keeping up with them. A lot of new terms they use that you might not be familiar with and acronyms. So don't be afraid to ask. It's a great learning experience. I think it's really one of the best boards you can join if you want to learn more about all the different parts of the town and how the town is financed. So thank you for applying for it.
I was on the board at the same time as you did, yes. I remember you saying, hold on, I'm trying to take the minutes. It was comical at times.
And then the acronyms sometimes, like I said, when you're unfamiliar with them and you want to learn as well as take the minutes, it can be difficult. So you say, okay, slow down a minute, what does that mean? So thank you again, wish you the best. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Valentina as the Finance Committee Secretary.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. Thank you, Valentina, that's a unanimous vote for you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too, bye bye.
Okay, next is to appoint Permanent Intermittent Officer Olivia Church to full-time officer and that will be. Vic is with us and David, you'll tell us a little.
Yep, so the police chief is with us. The last time we appointed a handful of police officers. Olivia, at that point, was also appointed to be a PI. She has worked as part of a PI and I believe as a dispatcher for some time. I can tell you, I know the police chief, I'm sure he's going to say it, but I can tell you the police chief has been very impressed with her. He's looking forward to bringing her on board. I believe she is with the chief right now. And just so you are aware, this is not adding staff. We had a police officer retire earlier in the year. So she is just filling that position, we're not adding staff. And again, to the chief's credit, is that before we bring somebody on, he makes sure that they're fully trained, vetted. He's done that and I know he's very happy with this potential candidate.
Vic?
Okay, I can hardly hear you guys, so I'm going to just. So tonight, like David just said, we're appointing the next full-time police officer for the town of West Bridgewater. And like David said, the opening is occurring due to the early retirement officer, Kenneth Thaxter. As you all know, we appointed three individuals from the statewide list about a year ago to make a local permanent intermittent list that we could then use to select for full-time individuals. During this permanent intermittent interview and background process, Olivia Church, along with two others, were selected. At that time, Olivia was only 20 years of age. And to tell you the truth, I was very skeptical while hiring somebody at such a young age. Olivia impressed me so much in her initial interview, I told Lieutenant Nixon, who was in charge of the background portion, this interview should be considered. We later, as you know, we later appointed two other individuals to full-time, which gave Olivia the added time to work within the police department, finish her degree, and turn 21. Just for a little fact, Olivia will be the first female appointed to the police department since 1993. We are excited to have such a smart, motivated, and dedicated individual to join our team. She's very, very ahead of her age. She's going to do a great job. And I'll let you speak with her. But I'm 100% in her corner for this position. And if selected, she will start the academy on March 1st. She is ready, she's been doing dispatching duties. She's only been here a little less than a year and she's already training new dispatchers. So you can see the confidence we have in her. So if you'd like, I'll have Olivia sit here and speak with you. It's kind of hard because I'm looking at two different spades here, but you want to go right there.
Hi, Olivia, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
How are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm tired from just listening to all of your accomplishments.
Thank you.
You've been very busy.
Yes, I have.
So do you want to tell us a little more about yourself? Vic covered quite a bit, but if you want to say some details, please.
Yeah, of course. So I graduated West Bridgewater High School in 2017 and then I continued on and went to Westfield State University at Westfield, Mass. Thank you. Um, I am still currently a senior there. I haven't fully completed my degree. I have one more semester, which I will be completing next fall. Just due to the academy and everything, I wanted to focus all of my attention on that because that is most important to me. I'm studying criminal justice and psychology. And I've been working here since June 2020. As the chief said, I have been training. I've trained one dispatcher completely and then I'm currently training another dispatcher right now.
Very good. Anthony, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I believe I had the pleasure of meeting you at the Ice Cream Event a few months ago.
Yes.
Hey, welcome. And I love that you're joining. It's great that a female is now in the department, it's been a while.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, congratulations, one of West Bridgewater's own homegrown. I love it when that happens. No, good luck to you on the fourth and it sounds like they're making a great choice. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to appoint Olivia?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes, that's a unanimous vote. You've been appointed, Olivia.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vic, appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item C. First one is to set the annual town meeting date for May 17th at 6:00 PM at the middle, senior, high school gymnasium. Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. Next is to open the annual town meeting warrant. We will need a motion to open it.
I'll make a motion to open the town meeting warrant.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. And last is to set the closing date for the annual town meeting warrant.
So we'll ask the board to take a vote to close the date for the annual town meeting warrant of Friday, March 26th at 12:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. That's unanimous as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Review and vote to approve the amended scheduled meetings and important dates for the first half of calendar year 2021.
So a couple of things I just want to make of note to let you know. For the most part, this follows your normal meeting schedule. However, town meeting is only 90 days away. It's going to come here pretty fast. And as is customary, a handful of times, we have had to either add a extra meeting because March is five weeks. We normally would go three weeks in between. But I am proposing that potentially we have a meeting on March 31st, it would be three in March and then two in April. I will tell you that if we have those three meetings in March, because I don't anticipate a lot of capital budget items because of the financial issues obviously everybody is facing, it may very well be that we only need one meeting in April versus two. Because right now, March 31st and April 7th is back-to-back. But again, I would bring it back to you. So at this point, as proposed, all we're doing is following your normal schedule and adding March 31st as a date. The only other date that I would like to call your attention to is on the lower right-hand side. We always do the six months out is at June 18th. Because the state has now recognized June 19th as a state official holiday. We follow the same schedule as state employees do. Is that the town hall would be closed along with, it becomes a paid holiday at that point. So just bring it to your attention. We had, I'd actually brought to your attention last summer. And I said I would wait for HRD, which is the Human Resources Division of the state, to make a final decision. They post what they call a red book. Their red book is in essence their employee manual. It was posted at the beginning of this year, January 2nd. They have included it, so now I'm doing it as an FYI to you guys.
Do we need to take a vote?
If there is no, if there are no objections to this schedule for your dates, then no date is necessary. But if you were saying right now, hey, I know I'm not going to be here, you know, March 17th for, although, that date, but if we can't do it, we'd have to move it. Assuming nobody has to move any dates, then we would just stay with the schedule. Mary, I believe, because you had emailed me at the beginning, I think that we captured the schedule that accommodated the request that you had put in. Because there was a week in April you were under.
Yeah, it was going to be school vacation week, but good lord, we're not going anywhere. No, it doesn't really matter. And I think that's the April 21st. It's fine, I canceled. What, the rest of the family didn't even know about it, David, thanks.
I mean, if something were to come up last minute, we could always change it around, whether it's a different week or even, it doesn't necessarily have to be on a Wednesday night, right?
That is correct. Historically, because during budget season, things do come up. There's a lot going on. And the board has always been very flexible if they had to make a last-minute decision. So by all means, we could do that.
Yeah, it would just mean a matter of posting 24, 48, 48 hours in advance.
That's correct.
Hi, Anthony, do you have a kind of that X?
I am.
Okay, approve the meeting minutes of January 6th, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. Accept meeting minutes of January 20th for review.
And just to let you know, those minutes have not been finalized. So we would just table those, so no vote is necessary.
Okay, let's get over that. And we are running just a few minutes late, but we are at 6:45 for budget hearings, 5410, Council on Aging. And we have Marilyn Mather with us to present that budget.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Marilyn.
Hi.
So I think you have the budget before you and there are no changes at all from 2021 to the next 22. With the exception of, I have somebody that became of age, so to speak, and they have their first longevity coming in next fiscal year. And also, I've completed 10 years, so my longevity will increase to $500. Oh, and there is one union person that I have that will be getting a step raise. But there will be no raises across the board for the rest of us.
So those are all contractual?
Yes.
Are there any questions on that budget?
Hello?
Mary?
I'm just pulling up, oop, I went too far, okay. Those are all for your budget? No, I have no questions, thank you.
So if we want to take a vote on that budget, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass 5410 to the Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. Your budget is going on to Finance Committee, Marilyn.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Since we have a figure, how is everything at the COA going?
Well, it's a little hectic right now because we haven't even finished planning for the 75-plus folks to be vaccinated. And tomorrow, we're going to start getting calls from the 65-plus. And I understand that the governor has said we won't be doing any community clinics. I haven't heard that officially from our fire department or our Board of Health as yet. But I'm thinking that we've been shut down for vaccinations.
So yeah, Marilyn, I was on a handful of calls earlier today. And I would say that you will be receiving something from us. Because unfortunately, it does look like that's, he did, he sent out a memo, caught everybody flat-footed today. But yeah, you'll receive something from us. And of course, like everything else, it could change tomorrow. But they seem pretty adamant in this decision they made today.
Well, you still deserve to be commended for your efforts, Marilyn. We know that you and Board of Health and the Fire Department have worked very hard and tried very diligently to get vaccines to West Bridgewater.
Yes.
It was completely out of your control, but your efforts are very much appreciated.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Well, 7 o'clock, next is the Water Department. They're not here yet. We could move on to something else, David. Is there a recommendation, suggestion as to what might?
Sure, we can, at 7:45, okay, second page, budget hearings. Those are all smaller budgets, so one department budget that I handle, if you're okay, I can mention, I can go through those.
Sure.
I will group them and I will kind of say it all as one. And then if there's any questions, we can go back. Town Account and Budget, that is up 0.13% because the only difference in the budget is the longevity increase for one person per their contract. Town Council will be level funded at $87,000. The Veterans Department budget will go down 1.29%. They've taken out some money for dues that the Veterans Agent is not going to be able to go to this year, if they even have them. So he's taken that out. Cable TV Committee will be level funded at 1,100. The Planning Board will be level funded at about 26,000. The Board of Appeals will be level funded at 5,900. The Rent Control Board will be level funded at 4,399. The ADA Committee will be level funded at 500. And the Municipal Building Needs Committee will be level funded at $1,486.
I'll make a motion to pass the percentage of budgets to the Finance Committee.
Can I ask a question about the Municipal Building Needs Committee? Do we have to put money into that fund at any point? Have they had to use funds for any of the buildings?
They have not. So this year, I do not anticipate a request. We did not put money in last year. They have not had a request in over a year. So since they didn't request last year, they have not had a request this year, I would anticipate that we will not be receiving a request to place money in again this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second?
I just found the budget, they have $1,500 roughly, it is, okay. Is there, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. That's unanimous.
We are still waiting on water, I don't see them, so.
I emailed them, so hopefully they'll be joining soon.
So if you want, we can also move on to the ratification of contract amendments.
Okay.
So before you, there is three that I'll do at the same time. The Assistant Town Administrator, HR Director, the Building Commissioner, and the Elderly Services Director or COA Director. All three of these people are under contract. They will all do a 2% raise this year. However, the Board of Selectmen initially said that because of what is going on with the current pandemic, they said we're going to do a 0% raise for everyone. These people are under no obligation, they were under contract. And they, you know, they deserve credit, all three of them have agreed that they would take a 0% for this year, which is what we offered to all our other union and non-union employees. So before you is contract amendments, which is, I'm going to ask you to ratify stating that for this current year, for them to receive a 0% raise.
Can I ask a question in the second year, in the following year? And there's going to be a bump up, or the, let's say it's 2%. Is it going to be 2% based on the amount they were paid for the current year? Or what it would have been had that 2% raise been given?
So the way that contracts are written, it would have been based initially on the original amount. So we will have to relook at that in a year from now. So the contracts are written that it will say $10,000 in year one, a 2% increase the following years is 10,200, and a 2% increase the following year is 10,400, I'm just rounding. So in the third year of any of these contracts, assuming there's a third year, they would say 10,400. So we will have to relook at that at that point, whether or not we can afford to pay that, or we may have to make an amendment. And again, I'm not so sure that everyone here has a third year. This may have been their final year of some of their contracts. So we'll look at it again a year from now.
And that would be something we'd do universally across all the department heads or everyone with contracts?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, like, for the people who have already done it, like I did it and the next one will be the police chief. We did 2% in year three. So I would anticipate that we would be doing the same for everybody else as well.
And that's going to be based on what the first year was? It's not going to be 2% on 2%?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Do I need the second? I can't remember. Anthony, did you make a motion?
Do you have a motion yet?
I'll make a motion, I win.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes.
So those first three contract amendments were for FY 2022, which takes effect in July 1st of this year. Currently, all of those people received a 2% raise, which is FY 2021. Lorna is entitled as confidential secretary, she's entitled to that 2%. But the way her contract in that position has historically been tied, which I would like to change in the future, is that it's always tied to the clerical contract. We've offered a 2% for FY 21 to all our unions. Most of the unions have agreed, the clerical contract is not settled yet. And therefore, Lorna, quite frankly, is being penalized. She should have received it back on July 1st. And they're the only union at this point that we are not as far along with the negotiations as we are with everybody else. And as you know, a handful of other ones have already settled. So with that said, I don't think that Lorna should be penalized. She does an excellent job, she's entitled to the raise. Once a clerical contract gets settled, she's going to get it anyway. So I think in fairness to her, is that I would ask, instead of waiting anymore, is that we agree that we would pay her the 2% raise retroactive to July of last year, as she is entitled to, and do it now instead of waiting for the union contract to be settled.
I probably already asked this question, but this is universal across the town, right? This is the only individual who is waiting on a union raise?
Yes, that is a non-union employee, yes.
That's what I meant, yes, thank you. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. I see we have Rick. I think Wayne is there, I'm not sure.
Wayne is on mute, I see his mouth moving.
Wayne, you're on mute, if you can hear me. Now.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you. Is anyone else from the Water Department joining?
I thought Art might be here, but I don't see him.
Should we wait a couple of minutes? Do you want to text him or?
Not really.
No?
Don't send him an email.
Okay, Lorna is sending him an email.
Can't. Got to figure out how I can turn up my volume, can't hear nothing.
We can hear you loud and clear.
He's joining right now.
Okay, Art is joining now.
All right.
There we go.
Hey, Art, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Okay, so we are ready for you to present your budget.
All right, so what do you want to hear? Do you want to hear line by line or lines that changed? I mean, basically, you asked for a zero budget and I tried to stay as close, but I've got lines that I had to increase due to their overrunning or requirements for our department.
Okay, so if you want to touch upon, I mean, as far as salaries were concerned, other than contractual?
All right, salaries all stayed the same as the previous year, everybody's taking a zero.
Okay, and what other lines do you have a significant change in that you'd want to talk about?
Can I, before we move on from labor, can I ask, there's a note on here that says, drop the hiring of a fifth laborer?
So at one time, we were going to hire a fifth laborer, but it's, we've been having some issues with budget. And so it's easier just to let that go for now. Plus, we're having a fun time just trying to replace our current guy that's missing. So there's no sense, it took us this long to get this far, we can wait a little while to get a little further. So that's why that line dropped significantly, because there's a salary out of it.
Are you going to need this individual for the next fiscal year?
I could use at least three more people, but you know, it comes down to, you know, rates, money, and income, revenue. It's, so it's better just to wait it out and see, and see how things fall out. We have a lot of things happening with our department, so right now, it's better just to wait and see what happens.
Well, on first glance, it looks like your budget is down. Well, on first glance, it looks like your budget is down by that amount.
Yes.
So it's not a level budget you're actually reducing.
Right, but I also remember a, like a notice coming out that no new hires or whatever, even though it was approved previously, we've gone an entire year without being able to fill the slot almost. And by the time we get through with our current hiring, we might be an entire year.
So since you brought that up, Wayne, my understanding is from the original post, you received about four hundred applications?
Um, I, yeah, none of them with skill sets that are, that meet our needs. I mean, I'd love to learn how to cook a little better, but I'm pretty good already, I think. And I know how to watch things, so I don't really need any correctional institutional either. And we're not getting the applicants, and we're fine tuning the process. And I think we have a, a fine tuned thing we're going to try again.
So I'm, I'm hoping what I have here isn't the final project, product, because I did ask to see a copy of what the latest posting is going to be. And I'm assuming this, this is not finished yet, because this posting, in my opinion, is going to deter any experienced person from applying and is going to get you four thousand inexperienced people. Because it starts out with, I mean, just to throw it out there, the only real requirement to the job is a thirty minute response time, and you can walk, crawl, climb, stoop, or kneel. But yet you prefer people.
I'll send you a copy of what I have.
Okay.
And then you can look at it and get back to me to see if that's what you're looking at. But I'm pretty sure that the one I have is really fine tuned.
Okay, yeah, because like I said, what I, what I received here, it includes that you'd prefer a jack-of-all-trades type of person. And my thought is, that's, I don't believe the type of person you're looking for.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't think you're looking at the right one, but.
Okay, all right, good, good. I was hoping you'd tell me that. All right.
Is it common for, or are other towns having the same issue going in here?
Oh, yeah, Bridgewater.
Not be able to hire a water department person?
Yes, it is.
Wow.
Very common. It's not this, it's, they've changed the licensing requirements. They've made it much harder. They're really looking for degreed individuals to be in the positions now. And it's really not, it's somewhat in between. You have to be a hands-on kind of person. You know, we don't need bookworms, because we get dirty at times. It's not, so. No, I'm not.
No, all right, thank you. That, that answered that question. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Do you want me to go on where the lines have changed? I don't want to eat up everybody's time here.
Well, just that there's a significant change. Wayne, if you want to point it out, then when you're done, we'll ask questions.
All right, well, you can, so a significant would be fifty one forty. That's longevity. That's by contract, but it, it's because it's a small amount and it's jumping that it looks like it's a gigantic number. But it's, I mean, it's truly not, but, but that's contractual, and there's nothing that can be done with that. I mean, other lines that went like allowances and stipends went down because I dropped the hiring of the fifth laborer. Fifty two thirty, water. That's up by fifty nine percent, but that's what we pay. So we have customers in Brockton, and we have customers in Easton. So we have to pay, they use their water, and then we have to pay them, and then we build them for our water. You know, we build them ourselves. So we pay their bills, and then we build them ourselves. So that's why you see that line jumping. There's no control on that one. Uh, the next one is fifty three fifteen. That's laboratory services. This line may not actually have been increased enough, but we'll go and I'll just, you know, I'll clamp down if I have to. But we're really getting hit with the PFAS thing is a big thing now. And it's four hundred dollars just for one test. And I'm not sure yet whether each site's going to require three tests. So that's twelve hundred dollars a test, a site. But as we move through, we'll figure that one out. It's kind of new to us, and it's something that Mass has stepped into, and now we're in it.
What are the notes that say last year's numbers mean?
All right, so I don't have, so this budget is not fixed yet. I don't have town halls numbers for benefits or things like that, or insurance.
Oh, okay.
I'm expecting that some of them will go up a little. Office supply fifty four twenty, office supplies, it's up by one point eight nine percent. I can never stay ahead of this. At some point, maybe next year, you'll see a big jump so that I can stop increasing it little amounts each year, just so I can be ahead of it. But I mean, like, you know, everything is going up in price, unfortunately. The next one is fifty seven eighty four, school and education training. So this is a licensed renewal year for us. And unfortunately, they're not relaxing our, our requirements. So by December, I have to have, all of my guys have to have twenty credits. And the classes are not cheap, so we're all going to be jamming in classes. I've been trying to get mine out of the way so I can cover for the guys if they all have to go off to a class or however the classes end up happening. But we're behind. It should have been spread out over two years, and it couldn't have been because of, you know, the way things are. Fifty eight eighty nine, equipment replacement. That's up by eleven point four six percent. And once again, we've overspent that line, and I'm just trying to stay ahead of it. Nothing, unfortunately, nothing is getting cheaper. I know I sound like a broken record with that excuse. And then everything else is basically loan amounts. A lot of them are down, except for the truck principal, which is, that's a new one to our line, and that's only going to be there for a couple more years. Fifty eight, fifty nine twenty, truck print lease principal. And then truck lease. I don't know how the lease went down, but that's up. But I think that's only going to be on us for another two years. So you'll see it one more year, and then it'll be gone. And then the rest of them, they're all, you know, interested or dropping. So questions from the audience?
I don't have any questions on the expense side, but how are you looking on the revenue side for this year? And what's your projection for twenty two?
So, so far, we look like we're collecting as we should be. It looks like everything's staying right along. And usage, because we had a drought year, was good too. So we had a little hiccup, and we were a little scared. But after we just went through our last billing quarter, we look like we're on track. And we'll cover with a little free cash, not a lot of free cash, but we'll have some free cash.
And so for twenty two, I'm assuming you budgeted a intentional surplus with the rate increase, which is fine if you did. I'm just wondering what you're, how much you budgeted for it. I'm assuming it's more, a little more than what your expense is.
Um, so the rates are set, and they were set when we got behind by the DOR. Um, as you know, the residents don't take well to paying for water that falls from the sky for free. We are covering our expenses, and it does, if, it takes a little time. The residents react. When you raise the rate, they react, and they knee jerk and they, because they know it hurts. If you run your sprinklers for, you know, four hours a day, it's a very costly thing to put drinking water on your green grass. So once they get used to the new rate, they should hopefully relax a little. But they did knee jerk and pull back a little, but we're going to cover our budget.
Are you receiving many calls about the new rate?
Uh, actually, I'm surprised. We didn't have, none, no. Nobody really complained.
And, and the, the water bills are being paid fairly timely?
Yeah, yeah, usually everybody, like, there's a good clump to pay right away. I, I don't want to say how, but there's, there's a cluster that pays right away. And then there's the cluster that waits until the last day of the period to do it, and then they all race in.
You know, it sounds like you've budgeted in, or it sounds like your income is going to exceed your expenses. I'm still surprised by the dropping of the fifth laborer. And I know that there's a freezing, or a hiring freeze. But if this is truly what you need to operate your department, and you were asked for a level service, level funded, whichever one it was, both, then should, can that position still be filled? I guess that's a question for David.
I think the Water Department did exactly what the Board of Selectmen asked. They came in with a level funded budget. That's down two point seven one percent. If they wanted to add that back in, then, yeah, it would be even year over year. And, but we also said that we didn't want any new hires. The person that Wayne is attempting to hire now is backfilling an open position the last couple of years, because he's been trying to fill that position. The fifth person that he's talking about would be in addition to what they've historically had.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I misunderstood.
Yeah, so I was going to say, so I think to Wayne's credit, in the board's credit, they fulfilled the wishes of the board, where they said, okay, we need to backfill this fourth position because it's vacant, but we're not going to add a fifth person as a new person, because they are fulfilling the spirit in the request of the board.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think they'd be happy at this point if they could just get one person.
Yep.
Right, Rick?
Yeah, we're, we're getting tired.
Wow.
Any other questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass this budget to the Finance Committee.
Sir, a second?
Second. Mm-hmm, second.
Kenny Hennas?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. Your budget is going on to FinCom.
Woo hoo! Thank you.
Hey, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, y'all have a good night.
You too. Okay, it's almost seven fifteen. We're going to have the budget sixty one hundred library. I do see Ellen is ready. I am going to choose myself from this budget, because there are employees at the union, at the library, that are members of Teamsters Local Six Fifty Three, and I do work at Teamsters Local Six Fifty Three in the benefits side, not the union side. So at this point, I'll accuse myself.
All right. So Ellen, if you just want to walk us through this, I see you made changes.
We have just a few adjustments to lines. Obviously, we, we kept to a level funded budget this year. The changes, the line changes, the first one would be the clerical salaries. That reflects, there had been a misunderstanding last spring about not being able to add hours to someone's pay. And it wasn't caught until after town meeting. So the employee had already started getting paid that amount. So we made adjustments at that point quickly to the rest of the budget. And so this is just basically reflecting what we're already doing. And then Laura Williams, who is here at the meeting as well, she's our assistant department head, and she has a step increase that's reflected on the second line down that's changed. Other than that, it's just really a matter of decreasing utilities and repairs. We were able, last year, we returned fourteen thousand dollars to the town. But even still, we were able to do some equipment purchasing, which was very helpful. You know, we returned money because we were in the middle of March, suddenly in lockdown mode. So I think that's probably reflective of a lot of departments. Interestingly enough, we've had a very busy and productive year, I'm happy to say. We switched gears. We stayed locked down until June first. And then on June first, we opened to strictly curbside. And we became as creative as we could in terms of what kinds of services we can provide our, our patrons curbside. And as it turns out, from, from June first through December thirty first, we handled two thousand two hundred and sixty-two transactions curbside. So we were busy. We had through two hundred and thirty-one book bundles created for our, for our patrons. And strangely enough, again, it's, it's one of these things that just shows how much of a library community West Bridgewater is. We had thirty thousand two hundred and eighty-nine books circulate in, over the course of the year through the sales network. So our patrons are still using the library pretty heavily. To our great advantage and great help, we have had the benefit of three highly qualified trained volunteers. One teenager, Eric Ames, who is working on the blog for our website. And then two senior volunteers, Connie Fiorentino and Jack White, who act as our runners out to the curb. And they also, when we opened, in September, we opened, we had a limited opening to the public, and then we closed down again, and we're hoping to open again to, for limited access. But one of the jobs that these volunteers handle is, is kind of gatekeepers at the door, making sure that people sanitize their hands and, and write their names down and their times and et cetera, so that we can do contact tracing if that was needed. So we've been really, really busy, but I'm really proud of the work that the staff has done. And it's very comforting and heartening to see how much reading and use of our online resources and our curbside services we've been able to do. It's really a credit to the emphasis that I've been trying to place on professionalizing our staff. So I've been sending people, I had been sending people to training. We've been insisting that people learn a lot of the technical skills that in preceding years had been done by maybe one person or even two people. My philosophy now is that everybody kind of needs to know how to do everything, and that includes technology. So that has had a really big payoff, because we've been able to help people get on their, you know, show people how to borrow books on their devices and through phone calls and curbside interactions. We've been able to help people do a lot of reading and printing and using the Wi-Fi. We increased the number of hotspots significantly from, we were at six, and now we're up to ten hotspots that people can borrow. That's been really helpful for students. Students have really needed to be able to borrow a hotspot. And I'm, I'm happy to say that we've been able to offer those to us. So in terms of the budget, it's pretty much just reflecting what we're doing now. And we've been, as I said before, surprisingly productive in a very challenging year. So are there, are there any questions that you might have for me?
I do know, thank you, Ellen. I appreciate everything you've done over the past few months, all the adjustments you've made in presenting the budget. Mary, do you have anything?
No, this is, this is fantastic. I love how you've been able to pivot and work with the pandemic and still serve so many. So great job by all of you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mary, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, make a motion to pass this budget to the Finance Committee.
Second, all those in favor?
Anderson, yes?
Kenny Hennas? Thank you, Ellen, and thank you for joining us, Laura.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Hey, I'm back. And it's almost seven thirty. Can we, I see John Donahue and Steve McCarthy are on. Are you having other members join along with you, John and Steve? When, should we go to that budget or wait and move on to something else?
I know Paula wanted to join. I saw that she accepted it. I'll email her right now.
Okay. So while we wait, do you want to chip away at a couple small write-offs?
Absolutely. So then where we picked up was ratified new contract. The police chief, we are proposing a new contract inconsistent with what we've done with everybody else. Is it this year, FY twenty-two would be year one? That would be a zero percent increase, and then the following years would be two and two. So this, there's, so it would be a zero, two.
So this, there's, so it would be a 0, 2, 2 for the police chief. And the only other item that we changed in this contract as well is that, as you're aware, vacation rollover in the past would always come before the board. And we've now amended any contracts going forward that as long as it stays within the stipulations of the contract, I would sign it. So we just made that change as well.
Is it consistent with the number of days that have been, they've been able to roll, roll over in the past?
Yep, 10 days.
Nothing's changed with that? Okay, is, so we need a motion to ratify chief's contract?
So what?
Is there a?
Second.
All those in favor?
Kenny, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes.
Thank you.
And Dave, along with everyone else who's accepted a 0% increase, we want to pass along our gratitude with that. So that's very much appreciated. Residents of the town, I'm sure will appreciate it and recognize that as much as they've sacrificed, the department heads have sacrificed it as well. So we appreciate that. Would someone else join? I can only see digits for the phone number. Digits and chirping.
Yeah, I don't know what Paula's phone number, so.
Uh, that's her.
That is her. Okay. Answer 7:30.
Paula, can you hear us?
I can. I'm sorry, for some reason, I couldn't get the video version to work.
Okay. And is anyone else going to join? Is Cheryl joining?
I do not believe Cheryl is joining, no.
Okay. Great. Then it is 7:30. We'll move on to Budget 1410, the word of assessors.
Are we connected? Do you see us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Good evening. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. I'm sorry, do you hear us? I'm sorry.
Yeah, your microphone is really turned up loud.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. We'll take care of that pronto. Testing, 1, 2, 3.
No, you, you, you guys are good. You can go ahead and present your budget.
Okay. The, the budget you have in front of you has a couple of changes that were, that I want to point out to you. We can go through any questions you have, but I want to try to point out on the consultant services, the, on line 5309. I don't know the total that you have in front of you for our FY '22 request. It did show 28,000, but it's now up to 35,500. The reason being is that the 28,000 covered the Patriot contract for 20,000, some appellate task board preparation work for six GIS training and mass GIS integration technical assistance. That was the 28,000. And what we've added to that, lo and behold, the, all through the years, the Department of Revenue always took care of the utility assessments for the local communities. Now they're putting the onus of coming up with the assessment or appraisal of the, of our utilities with the community. So John has done some checking around, and we have to now pay for our appraisal, which based on what we're, what we're going to see for the final number on utilities and for the projected growth for this community, it shouldn't be a problem. It's just, we apologize, it was added late to the, to the budget because in FY '21, the DOR, DOR didn't know what they're going to do with it. And they only had 21 communities that were going to be certified. And we weren't up for certification in '21. '22 came along, and they're still kicking around us exactly what they're going to do with it. But we do know that we're going to need the appraisal on our, on our three utilities of Columbia Gas, Mass Electric, and New England Power. There, the, the total assessed value for those things exceeds $22 million times a tax rate, is substantial tax revenue for the community. So we're hoping that with an appraisal, you know, coming, coming forth for '22, we'll reap the benefit of some growth on that. So the, the community, each and every one now, coming up with their own appraisal or assessment, which is really an appraisal. We have to hire somebody to do those three utilities that I just mentioned to come up with the new assessments. They get kind of complicated because they're, they're, they're looking at some new approaches, which I won't get into, but I can see why they're doing this now. The, the cost of these things have become prohibitive. However, because we, we want to maybe have Patriot, our vendor, our current vendor do them, John's negotiated hopefully a volume discount for the three utilities. Another community had one done piece by piece, and they were, the appraisals were 6,000 apiece. We're hoping to get these done for between 2,000 and 2,500 apiece because like I just said, we're going with our current vendor. So I apologize, but on our, on our budget, on line item 5309, I don't know what figure you have in front of you, but it should, it should read, or will read 35,500 instead of the 28,000. And then, you know, all the other stuff, we can go through any questions you might have. The, I don't know what's really changed over the other years. The, the database, oh yeah, the contractual services on line 5398, but the, the, our amount is 12,000, where is it? Sorry, 12,800. There's a 300, it's a small difference. That's for the Patriot software license to use their stuff and for a copy machine maintenance. So for 1160. The other stuff falls into place year after year, you know, not too many drastic changes. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So the, the creepage of the three-year, three utility?
Yes.
And I think you said it has to be done, did you say it has to be done every three years? Or is it just?
Does it have to be done every three, a tri or every three, every three years? Probably every year going forward. Probably every year going forward. And again, the Department of Revenue hasn't really settled on this.
So you don't really know yet if you?
I would, I would expect every year. Yep. But I'm hoping though, I'm hoping though, when you, when you look at it from our perspective, that the way those things go, that the, that the growth and the, the growth in utilities will probably exceed other years because now we're really, it's more like of a fee job versus like, you know, a mass appraisal blanket job, they might do it at Department of Revenue. I'm not saying the job to substandard, but they use what they call a net book value, which is not really an accepted practice too much anymore. Now this appraisal will have Patriot or whatever we're going to look at, you know, use, look at it more like I would do it like as a, on a fee job. And hopefully we'll, 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 you know, we'll get a more, hopefully, you know, more growth out of it. And I can see that happening. Just, just to follow on Denise, as you know, the Department of Revenue changed the recertification, the certification cycle from a three-year cycle to a five-year cycle. So it would definitely have to be done every five years. But because the town of West Bridgewater performs interim assessments every year, I would speculate that we would have to do it every year if we continued with interim assessments.
So that's going to be mandated, that we will need to do this, we'll need to spend $7,000? Well, not that we'll need to spend that amount, but?
So somewhere between 67500, right?
But it'll be mandated that we need to do this appraisal every year? It's already mandated?
It appears that way, Denise. However, comma, we have not received a final word from the Department of Revenue. Patricia Hunt, who is the legal counsel for the municipal finance, the chief counsel for municipal finance, I put it, I sent her an email to ask her that specific question. She will be appearing as a speaker for the Bristol County Assessors Association virtual meeting on March 18th. We expect and hope that we will get a definitive answer from her on that day. And I'm going to try to get a definitive word in the meantime. Like I said, I sent her an email. I'm waiting to hear back from her. Yeah.
So we'll know by March 18th as to whether?
Right. I believe, I hope so. And you know, like I said a second ago, I'm, I'm thinking out loud that on something like this, where, you know, we're taking like more of a fee look at it, I would think that the, the growth will hopefully, you know, pay for the, you know, more than pay for the appraisal amount that we'll have to look at. And I think based on talking to another community, having our vendor do it, we'll save some money on the appraisal and maybe pick up some additional growth. So hopefully there'll be a win-win.
So how often do you appraise them now? Are they not appraised at all?
We never did before. The Department of Revenue was a sign of, a sign of value for every community on the utilities.
So what you're saying is the Department of Revenue has picked up on something that was lacking in the process that could have brought towns more revenue?
I, I'm not saying, I'm not sure. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, you know, they, they did it before and hopefully taken, you know, whatever. What, what I will say, Denise, is that the Department of Revenue is changing its position because there have been two significant appellate task board cases where the assessors from, I think it was from a lot of town, it doesn't matter. Assessors from one or two communities challenged the net book method of valuation and stated that that was an accounting method, but not a valuation method. Right. So the courts have ruled that net book valuation is not full and fair cash value. And so that the communities now, at the direction of the Department of Revenue, must combine the net book value, the accounting method, with the reappreciate, excuse me, with the reproduction cost less depreciation on a 50-50 basis. So 50% net book and 50% depreciation, excuse me, reproduction less depreciation. And that's what the Department of Revenue is indicating to all the communities. So as Steve said, the Department of Revenue used to get all the information from the utilities, the number of poles, the number of conduits, the underground transformers, the above-ground transformers, their whole infrastructure. And they would come up with a net book value and then tell each community in Massachusetts what they will assess or what they would assess those properties for. Now the courts have said that does not represent full and fair cash value. Communities must adopt a new methodology.
So is this for taxes paid on land that the town owns? I don't think I understand.
This is the personal property.
Property. It's the personal property.
So residents are going to be paying an increased real estate tax potentially?
No, no. I think what they're saying is the, it's charging the utilities on their personal property on West Bridgewater land. So the, the lines, the poles, am I correct, John? Is this what you're referring to?
Lines, poles, conduits, underground transformers, above-ground transformers, whatever subject of taxation under the personal property guidelines.
So I guess this is my question. It, it goes to, the utilities would provide you with the inventory of the personal property that is out there individually. And what you're really talking about is a valuation method that we use to tax it. So I, I guess I'm thinking in my mind, if I have a list of the inventory here and now I need to go from using net book value to fair and full cash value or a hybrid of the two, isn't that simply an accounting calculation where you take your gross number, you apply that number, and you get your new number? 7,000?
We're not going to get into, we're not going to get into a valuation issue here under the guidelines of this budget here. That's something we could sit down and talk about, but?
So I, let me finish my sentence, please. So the rest of the sentence was going to be $7,000, sounds like an awful lot of money. Are, are you saying this is an extensive amount of work?
Yes. And it's for three, it's for three separate utilities. The one that was done separately, there was one in, in a nearby community, it was 6,000 for the one.
Right. Sure. Oh, okay. Please go ahead.
Hey, just out of curiosity, if this was the result of an ATB case, in this, I'm assuming then the plaintiff was the municipality because they believed that they weren't getting enough value to tax. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it was at a little bit short sight on their end? Because I'm making the assumption that although you may not get full and fair in every single case, because the state is putting a value on it, you probably never had to worry about an abatement on it as well. That must have been kind of the quick pro quo acceptance.
Well, David, that's, that's wandering into an area of what the Department of Revenue did in the past. And I, in this format, I would simply say internally at the Department of Revenue, there were individuals questioning that process. But because it was essentially an overwhelming task to take on, and there really aren't that many experts in, not just net book, because that's an accounting procedure, but there really aren't that many experts in reproduction costs of these items. It's not, it's, it's not that you just take the, the price of the item and depreciate it. It's a matter of knowing the ma, the market value of the reproduction of the item or replacement of the item, plus the appropriate depreciation scale, schedules.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing the value, John. What I'm saying is, is that I assume that if the Department of Revenue is determining the valuation, whether it's correct or not correct, and we're applying our tax rate to it, that because we are not determining the value, then there must never have been an abatement process that you had to worry about.
That's correct.
And so my point is?
I'm not sure about that because we bill it. So I mean, there must be an abatement that they file and it gets hurried. It's going to come out if somebody's all the way. But the sausage-making process used to be with the Department of Revenue. Yes. The utilities would work those things out. And I presume, David, and I cannot, as a matter, as a matter of fact, I presume that it was, because it was agreeable to both parties, appellate task board cases would not follow.
Yep.
Right. But I think what happened was a community felt that it wasn't getting its full and fair cash value under that accounting process and took a utility or assessed them for more money than the net book and then had to justify how they did it and why they did it.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just wondering as to whether or not I was short sight on their part. But in any event, and the second thing is, let's, is the ATB case could be appealable. So is there an expectation that it's not going to be appealed?
Yes, because I mentioned there was a couple of appellate task board cases. But what I meant to say by that was it went to the SJC. And the SJC remained, sent it back down to the ATB, and the ATB reinstated its judgment.
Okay, okay. And I guess my only last question is, there's not a lot of changes. I mean, I know there's some, but there's not a lot of changes in infrastructure for utilities over a short period of time. I understand there may be a lot of heavy lifting in year one, but if there's not a lot of increase in poles and obviously transformers, I'm assuming in years two and three or whatever other years, there can't be a lot of lifting on Patriot properties at that point to reassess.
And, and again, David, from my perspective, and you may be right, but I'm not disputing that. But from my perspective, it's a matter of expertise. There aren't many people out there with the expertise. So even though we might have the inventory, I, I think it's going to be kind of a shifting area of what is that inventory worth and what is the appropriate depreciation? And, and I, you know, there may be appellate task board cases that come out of this process. And I've seen it before where they, they, they can, in fact, if they can lend some type of income that's generated, they can do some type of income approach to back up whatever they have for the depreciation. They can look at it a couple of different ways to see how close they are.
Yep, yep. I'm following. Okay. And, and how would this communicate? Was this communicated from DOR?
I didn't, I didn't hear. How's it communicated from your IGR zero?
Was it an IGR?
Well, I sent you, I sent a couple of documents to you. It wasn't an IGR, I'm sorry. It wasn't in the Department of Revenue sheet. There, there were two documents that we have to rely on, and they're really not that clear to, to, to underscore the point. One is an update from the Department of Revenue Division of Local Services, November. And the other one is a, a finance opinion from Patricia Hunt, who I mentioned earlier, who is chief counsel for municipal finance. Those are the, really the only two documents we have to go by. And when you get a chance to read them, I think you'll understand what I'm saying was that they lack clarity.
Okay, I'll take a look. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula, do you have any comments? Paula, do you have any comments? She's still there? Paula? She is still there?
I'm here.
Oh, there she is.
Yep, no, sorry. I was on mute, so I didn't make any noises to disturb the meeting.
Did you have?
No, I, um, no, I was just going through some of my notes and stuff to, to see because I didn't remember that line item with such a big jump. So I was just going through some of my stuff here. Um, but I, I, I don't know, because I'm, I know we did have, John gave us one revised budget, but I thought that was one that we got via email and that line item wasn't that amount. John, could you just remind me when you gave us that particular one?
Paula, we start this meeting by, the first thing I said is that there is a change on the, a, a, a recent, very recent change on the, on that line item, 5309 from 28 to 35. And I explained what, what the change was at the last second because of the Department of Revenue now instituting a new policy. So that was mentioned to the, to the board when we first started this meeting.
Okay. Well, I was having trouble getting in, so I, I did not hear that part.
That's what I figured, yeah.
Okay. So this then isn't one that, a budget that we voted on?
That's correct.
I'm just trying to understand.
That's correct.
Well, when did you have your meeting to vote on the budget? When did you have your meeting to vote on the budget?
Oh, it had to be over a month ago. I'm not sure exactly when, but sometime ago.
Okay.
Well, that's why I was just confused. If this is just a last minute change, then we changed the budget since the vote?
So I, I think, I guess the question is, is this procedurally correct? If this was not the market that they voted on, that's being presented.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
David?
So budgets were due at the end of January. This budget was presented timely. So I assume that he had his board vote on it at that point. I was in meetings all day, so I really didn't talk much to my staff. Linda said that she did receive an email from John earlier today saying that he had to make an increase that pertained to what I discussed earlier with public utilities. John said he sent me some emails. I'm not looking at them. So I would think from a procedural standpoint, right now, the Board of Assessors should recollect and go back and relook at their, their budget and then take a formal vote. But from our standpoint, they're letting us know what the numbers are. We pass it on to FinCom. They, I think, that my guess is Steve, is that your board will probably take another vote at some time and send over that new formal budget.
Right. Absolutely. We can do that. I just want to alert the board, figuring that was a noticeable change from when we looked at it back in January or whatever. And I wanted to point it out right away. We could certainly revote on the budget now that we have some more information from the Department of Revenue regarding these utilities.
And we might nail down that number definitively with the company.
So the other line I have a question on is 5111. Everyone is taking a zero percent. Everyone, the majority of, can someone turn off their microphone? Or stop stopping papers, one of the two. Thank you. Um, the other line item was 5111, appointed official. The majority of our department heads and contractual union contracts have accepted a 0%. That line item is showing an increase. Would you like to speak to that? So first you have to turn your microphone back on. I think you're talking, but your microphone's not on. I don't know if they can hear me. It looks like Steve's talking, but.
Okay, I'm sorry. The, on 5111, John's contract is still in the midst of negotiation and that the slight increase of $850 for 22 was put in. I'm not sure why, but we did get the memo that it was supposed to be for 22 a 0%, a level, so.
But that's what was submitted at the time, in January.
So I, also I don't understand, you added this item in last minute, 7,000. Are you saying you just neglected to go back and change that?
John, to talk to him.
So that's what, that's what was submitted in January. Because I'm in negotiation with the board for my fiscal '21 contract and I am anticipating negotiation for my fiscal '22 contract. At the time that the budget was presented, I was hoping to get a 2.5% increase for fiscal '21. And so that would carry over to fiscal '22 as a less than a half, less than a percentage increase for the same dollar amount of 86,700.
So, but that's not the number. The number that was approved in fiscal year '21 was 86,700. So that's the most that contract could be, which would mean the next year would be a zero. So under fiscal year '22, that would be 86,700. Unless you're saying that you're not going, you know, that you're not going to negotiate zero. Or you're not interested in negotiating a zero.
Well, as I said, I'm still in negotiations for, for, really for two years, for fiscal '21 and fiscal '22. And it's, it's really just, and it's a difference of $850. And it may not come to fruition. I, frankly, I might retire, depending on how the negotiations go. So that, that will remain to be seen.
I don't have any other questions.
And the clerical 5112, is that a step increase?
I'm sorry, Anthony. I'm having trouble.
5112, the clerical, is that a step increase for that one?
I think that's just based on what we were told to calculate it. Was it 2%? Because I know there's union negotiations on that.
Yep. So is it?
That's the 2% of the '21.
It's a stepping increase.
Yeah, no, it looks like you guys, you've asked all my questions.
Paul, did you have any more comments, John, Steve, or Paul?
No, I have nothing at the moment. Because like John said, we're still trying to negotiate a contract, so we have no idea what the amount may or may not be. But I believe when we did the original presentation bef, last year or at one point we had put in a higher amount just as a placeholder.
Which is, which should not be. That's a little bit ridiculous to do.
Right, but we're not debating the, the right or wrong of it, but we had put in a higher amount previously, just for the purpose of the budget. But, but no, I have nothing else on it.
It sounds like there's going to be changes to this budget. Should we ask them to come back and re-present?
Well, I, well, what we could maybe is vote to pass this on to Finance Committee with reservations that they should look closely at two particular outlines. When do we finalize the budget? What's the date?
So we'll be voting on the final, to finalize the budget. It's, it might be March 31st meeting that we discussed earlier. And just again, just so everybody has the historical facts. John's salary was 85,000 in FY '20. Last year, he presented a budget for a 6% increase, 5.9 to be at 90,000. Negotiations had not been settled. As Paula said, the board at that, Mr. McCarthy said at that time it was a placeholder. Eldon had said during that meeting, his chair, he said that we were doing 2% for all of our departments that were new under contract. The contract negotiations were never settled. So the Board of Selectmen then approved a 2% increase to be fair to John. So that way he would receive a raise. John has still not settled the contract.
Let me.
You might want to turn off your speakers, Steve.
Okay.
So we still hadn't settled the contract and then John, at this point, put in the 87,550, which would be a 3% increase over the FY '20. So again, we'll see how it all shakes out. But John, I sent him a memo, I met with the chairman. I'm hoping that they're going to sign a contract with John for 86,700, which would be a 2% increase, consistent with all new contracts for that year. And then would be a 0% increase for this year, which would be consistent with everybody else as we did those other contract amendments earlier today.
So is there a motion on this contract?
I'll make a motion to pass this to the Finance Committee. I'd also like to ask that we receive, I don't know, I don't think they need to come in again, but if we can receive an updated version within the next week or so.
It's probably just if I may, my guess is Steve, you're gonna want your board to vote on it. You probably don't meet for two weeks or it might be in a couple of weeks.
Right. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I hear yous?
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just have to remind people because I did have a couple of residents say that when they were trying to listen to our video, someone's shuffling papers, they're, they're moving things around and they can't hear what's being said. So just have to remind people when they come in, they have, you know, they'll have the big books in front of them. I'm probably guilty of it too when I was looking through pages. So I think that takes care of all budgets that were being presented, correct?
You are correct.
Okay. So we can move on to the surges agreement?
Yeah, thank you. So Surgis is our multi-town, about 22 towns now for our procurement agency that we use. We spend $4,100 a year and they procure a lot for us and making sure that we follow all the rules and regulations. Surprisingly, this agreement was signed in 1996 and state law raises that an IMA cannot exceed more than 25 years. So we're at 25 years and just a little over a month. So with that said, at this point, there is a, there's a new contract here. We're asking all municipalities to renew it for another 25 years. We may, just as an FYI, we are having our legal counsel vet it. We may ask for each town to support it as a special act. So in 25 years, we don't have to take another vote, you know? But we'll see if that comes to fruition. In the meantime, what I would ask is, is for the board to approve a new IMA. There is language there, I believe that the chair has. And I would ask her to read that as a motion. In the spirit of the motion, would be approving a new IMA and being part of it as well, Bridgewater for Surgis.
Okay, I'll move the motion. I'll read the motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to reauthorize and amend the intermunicipal agreement that created the Southeastern Regional Service Group, Surgis, so as to extend the term of that agreement for a period of 25 years from February 1st, 2021, subject to any rights of termination or withdrawal, with all other terms of the original agreement remaining in place without change and to authorize the chair to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote. Any?
Second.
Go ahead. He seconded.
Okay, I read the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, there is a second. All those in favor?
Can I hear yous?
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes.
Thank you.
Appoint a Board of Selectmen representative to the Capital Budget Committee.
So we do this every year. Usually there are two meetings. They happen in March. They do normally happen in the afternoon hours as department heads are still on, on campus. So a Board of Selectmen member is a member of that committee. And so Anthony has been a member of in the past because he had the flexibility to be able to meet during the day. So whoever it is at the board would like, if you could just make that motion, please.
Would you like to do it again?
I would, if I remember, so I would like to do it again.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Anthony to the Capital Budget Committee?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Can I hear yous?
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay, review and vote on Allegra's quote for annual town report and Finance Committee books.
So before you, you have a quote from Allegra. Allegra is our vendor. Every single year, the Finance Committee handbook that goes to town meeting is paid for by the selectmen's budget. And in addition to that, there's a small booklet as well that is the report from every municipal board in town, which is a requirement of the law, by law. That both gets printed for annual town meeting is paid for from your budget. We go out, we quote every single year. The, the numbers are in front of you. And I'm not exactly sure why the selectmen vote on it every single year. It's just a bill like other bills, but we've always done it this way. So I place it before you just from a, a tradition standpoint. So I would ask the Board of Selectmen to approve both quotes from Allegra, the annual town report and the Finance Committee book.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I hear yous?
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes. Vote on Darlene Green's vacation carryover request?
So Darlene Green is a member of our collective bargaining agreement. She has not used all of her vacation time for the same reasons that most people this year have not. She is entitled by contract to roll over five days. However, per the contract, it does require notification approval by the board. And so I ask for see.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I hear yous?
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes. Communication and reports from boards, commissions and town officials. We have a zoning board of appeals, special permit application, garage repair on class two dealership located at 265 East Century Street.
So all garage repairs, new garage repair and dealerships all require special permits through the zoning board of appeals. So they are currently in the process. We've not done this for a little while. You may remember doing a site plan review from planning board. You'll see what the project looks like. And also same thing with, with special permitting from the zoning board of appeals. It's kind of nice to see when come in because that means that we finally have a little bit of, of construction going on in town. This building has already been built. It is a three-bay property directly across of West Bridgewater Country Club. They've already received their permits and have built the building. However, they can't open it because they still have to go through the process. So right now, this is gonna go before the ZBA. The Board of Selectmen have the opportunity, if you have any concerns or questions that you allow, you provide them tonight, Lauren then captures them and we send them over to a memo to the board, the ZBA board. So that way they're aware as they go through that process. After they receive their special permit, they would then come back before the Board of Selectmen because you then have to approve a garage repair and automotive dealership class two license.
So is this when we would ask them to make sure there's certain trees planted out front? Make sure the lights are a certain way? Is this where we would give those recommendations?
That's, yes, that is entirely accurate.
What, what was there prior to this building?
It was, it was, there was a kind of a decrepit building in the back and there was, and the rest of it was undeveloped.
Are there residents on left, right, across the street, maybe one?
Right there buying New York pizza? Isn't that right there?
That's exactly correct. So it's right next to New York Pizza, directly across is the golf course. Beautiful golf course. Anybody who wants to golf, they should go there. And then immediately adjacent to it, heading towards the center of town, is a, is a small residential home. So I would say it's kind of kitty corner from that building. To Meredith's point, usually you also would say during construction, worry about dust and that type of stuff. But it is already built. So, so it's more about giving them the permit. So it may very well be, would you like them to plant a tree? Would you worry about, they have to comply with down lighting at this point anyway, but you can sort of make that. They have to comply with down lighting at this point anyway, but you can sort of make that provision as part of your concerns. Or any, you know, for example, you're going to eventually vote on a license. And this is where I've always found, I'm, I'm, I'm always a little weirded out because the ZBA is going to say, well, we don't want you open past ten. But you guys are actually going to license it. So you may say you don't want to open past nine, where you would have the ability to do that. So if you think, for example, you don't want a garage repair license open beyond nine o'clock, we should put that in writing now so that way they're aware. But just a suggestion.
Just curious, if that were the case with the opposite, who would have the authority if we wanted the license to be open later?
Yeah, so it's, that's why I say I'm never sure, but.
Why aren't we the special permit?
In most towns you are.
Well, let's hope we agree on the time.
Is there a typical request? I don't know if certain towns have like, oh, we want so many trees planted X feet from the road. Do we have a standard request?
The other is that this is in your business district. So, you know, they're complying with every one of our local rules. So again, not to say that you can't make a recommendation about planting a tree, but the reality is it's right on the, it's right on the main road. You know, you, I'm not exactly sure what you would want to request at this point, except for maybe if, you know, for, I doubt that they want to be a twenty-four hour operation. But if you were concerned about that, you could say we would just state that don't make it twenty-four hours. Most of our garage repair licenses probably close at what, eight o'clock and eight o'clock? So, you know, please be aware that we've always voted to close them at eight. So we would ask that as part of the special permitting process. I'm not sure what else we would ask at this point.
I definitely even think we can have twenty-four hours. Don't we have something in our bylaws where we can't have a twenty-four hour business? Or was that just a?
That was the ZBA that didn't.
It was the ZBA. Okay. All right. So it wasn't statutory?
It's not. They just never, they just never permitted one for twenty-four hours.
It says that they're requesting eight to six.
So if you want to say that you would, you feel comfortable with those hours, then.
Saturday and Sunday or?
Monday through Saturday, eight AM to six PM and then closed on Sundays. That's what it says in this.
Sounds reasonable.
Any, any golf balls go their way, must be returned.
Absolutely. Yeah. I guess the, the only thing in that, again, that's going to be covered by the ZBA is lighting. You just want to make sure that there's no lighting that could shine out into the road and cause any problems because it is a heavily traveled road.
But we can capture that as a concern.
But I don't think there's really anything else.
I don't have anything else.
Yeah, I don't have anything either. Do we need to vote on this?
We.
Whatever your concerns are, or if you, so you want to say if it's amenable, mendable to the eight to six time slot and also that you request that lighting's be done in such a way not to interfere with traffic on one oh six, that could be a motion.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kenny, yes.
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Correspondence from the public to determine the course of action. Have you received any correspondence from the public?
We have not.
No. Public comment period. We don't have a public comment. Town administrators' report, COVID- nineteen update dated.
So it has been a busy week in this department. First, the good news. Good news is our cases continue to trend down in West Bridgewater. Year, week over week, we were at thirteen this week. The previous week we were at fourteen. You may recall that the last time we met, we were in the high twenties and that was a reduction by half of where we were over the previous month in January. So all positive and the cases are trending down in the state and in the region as well. So that's all a positive sign. What is concerning, all right, so let's talk about phases. Right now, we are in the phase of seventy-five and older is able to get vaccinated. They can go to statewide sites. Currently open is in Gillette Fenway in Marshfield Fair, at least in this part of the state. And shortly opening will be in Natick and in Dartmouth. We received a memo today that effective tomorrow, sixty-five and older, along with people who have two or more serious underlying conditions in there spelled out as to what that means, they are now eligible for vaccination. What's disappointing is, is that we've always been led to believe that at a local level, we would have the opportunity to be able to vaccinate our residents. And so our fire department did the right thing and received certification and went through the process. And our Board of Health did the same thing as well. In essence, you get certified as to what you're capable of doing and, and also get certified on the software that the state uses. We then, in addition to that, is that we set up all of our infrastructure. Marilyn Mather, who was on earlier, should be commended along with Lieutenant, with Deputy Chief Lincoln Tebow and Health Agent Robert Casper. We have spent countless hours together to make sure that we had the infrastructure in place. We have seniors through our senior tax work, our program ready to make the calls, make the appointments. Our EMTs and our fire department should be commended as well. They were prepared, ready, certainly are skilled and trained. And they would be at the council on aging on any of those days. And we were prepared and ready and we assumed that we could vaccinate at least a couple of hundred per week since we were led to believe that we would be able to get that, that amount. For three weeks in a row, we have applied for the vaccine and we've never received any. What was very discouraging is that some municipalities around us did receive some vaccine. So for example, over the past two weeks, East, Eastern received two hundred. Brockton this past week received zero, but they received four hundred the week before. East Bridgewater received zero. Halifax received fifty because they partnered with Plimpton who received fifty. And Bridgewater received one hundred and then this past week received zero. There didn't seem to be any rhyme or reason as to who was receiving what they were receiving. And so those respective towns were then able to perform a vaccination clinic. We wrote countless letters. I reached out to both of our state delegations, both our Senator Timolty and our State Rep Michelle Dubois. And we could not get any answers. I'm on a call every single week with DPA, along with the Board of Health. We couldn't receive answers as well. The memo that came out from the state today effectively shut off all towns. What it said is, is that besides the state vaccination sites, he said it's going to allow twenty cities, all cities in Massachusetts, to receive vaccinations going forward. The one closest to us here is Brockton, but it will only be for Brockton residents. So Brockton will be vaccinating their residents. The next closest is Randolph and then Taunton. Not a single town in the entire state has been authorized. We have been now made aware that all of our residents at the town level will have to seek mass vaccination sites, as I said earlier, Gillette Stadium, Marshfield Fair, Dartmouth Mall or the Natick Mall are the four that would be the closest ones. So it's discouraging because one, we were prepared and ready. Two is I just think it's flat out unfair that we're going to ask residents of towns that you are going to have to travel somewhere else, make an appointment on a system that is cumbersome and difficult, wait in line, get vaccinated by somebody that you don't know and then drive back and then repeat that process three weeks later. And yet if you live in a city, you could drive a quarter of a mile down the street and go to wherever it is in that street, in that place, get vaccinated from the EMTs that you know in your department, in your municipality. Probably talk to other department heads or other people in there that you know. And then three weeks later, again, you stay within your own city. The Baker administration has seen, for whatever reason, they dug their heels in on this. So I was on multiple calls today. The cities at this point, who are always partnering with towns and I'm not being disparaging towards them, they have to worry. But if I'm a mayor of a city, I have to worry about the city that I'm mayor of. At this point, although they feel bad for towns and they do, they're moving on. They're happy. They're going to get their vaccinations and they're going to do their thing. So we've lost a partner at the municipal level of all the large cities in lobbying the state for this. Tomorrow, there is going to be a rally at the State House from police, fire chiefs. There's going to be a meeting in Whitman. But I can tell you that from all accounts, the Baker administration seems pretty clear cut that they feel that this is going to be the best way for them to proceed. Truthfully, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me from this standpoint. Their argument is, is that they want from an effective standpoint, from a, from an efficiency standpoint, is to have these handful of live vaccination clinics, they're receiving a hundred and ten thousand per week and that way they could push out this hundred and ten thousand at those sites. The reality is if they gave every municipality in the state three hundred, that's a hundred and ten thousand. We're still going to get a hundred and ten thousand. Everybody's going to sit on them. We all want them. So it's been very frustrating because we've invested the time and the energy. We've made the phone calls, sent the letters in lobbying. And at this point, our voices have not been heard. And so we will ask our residents at this point, although we can continue as official town officials and elected leaders to lobby and make those calls. I know the chairwoman, I know you reached out to Senator Timolty as well. I can tell you that he's spoken multiple times to our fire chief and myself. At this point, I would ask anybody who is able to get vaccinated to please register. If you have issues, please call two one one. They will help you. You can now also register on, by phone as opposed to having to do it in person. Please go to those sites and get vaccinated. We'll continue to fight, but it does unfortunately look like we will not be doing it at the local level. That may change if they go, when they realize they now have to vaccinate three million people at a later date. Like seriously, I, I, I love going to Red Sox games. That's one of my favorite things to do. There's no parking. So you take public transportation. No one's taking public transportation if you're seventy-five years old going in to get vaccinated in the middle of a pandemic. There's no parking there. That doesn't make any sense to me. You know, it's very aggravating.
I mean, have they considered, do they provide any transportation if a senior calls two one one? Do they provide any transportation?
They do not. Ian, I can tell you, I'll give this, the mayor in Brockton a lot of credit today. He was on the phone with people at the state saying, because remember, BAC is, is out of Brockton.
Right.
And he said, get us more vaccines and let us run. Because at that point, he wasn't aware that he was going to get a ward as a city. So he was with us at least lobbying at the local level. And he said, if you get us the vaccines, we'll use our BAC box, BAC buses and we'll go pick everybody up. And it was declined. Now they eventually got permission to be able to do it at a local level. So good for him. He's not going to have to go through that process anymore. But it's unfortunate because we're prepared, we're ready. And quite frankly, if we could get three hundred vaccinations a week, we could start as a small population, we could start to vaccinate a decent amount of our population. And what's really aggravating from my standpoint is I want to do something. Like I want to help. You guys want to help. The people we're talking to, Marilyn and Kenny and Lincoln and Rob, they want to help. We want to do this. And, and so we're being barred from being able to do what we all get paid to do, which is to help our local residents out. So that's the biggest frustration. So anybody who's listening to this, please, at this point, make the, make the appointments, make the phone call on two one one. If you qualify at this point, you're going to have to make the trip. Please sign up and get vaccinated.
What about using our vans, council on any vans for those who absolutely need transportation?
And would the state help us out to group appointments?
So that's the key because that's what we're unable to do. The answer is yes. I talked to Marilyn about this. So if somebody is unable to drive, then we will try to help out that person. However, it's a nine or twelve person bus. We can't put nine and twelve people on it because of social distancing. You're talking two or three or whatever. And, and then it becomes very inefficient if you're driving like one person back and forth. And then you have to group. So if a husband and wife can make that appointment, that will always be done together. So we can drive those people in, you know, that are in desperate need. But we only have one van, so we can't over promise that. Because one person might go to Marshfield and somebody has a similar appointment in Foxville. We can't get them both at the same time. So again, you're more than welcome to reach out to the COA. If we can help because somebody's in a crucial dire situation, we will do everything that we can to help.
So if the city of Brockton was willing to donate BAC transportation, are they still willing to donate that transportation?
I could certainly ask that question. I don't know the answer. I mean, I will say, somebody, somebody has to pay for that, right? Because you still have to pay for the driver and all that. So when, so, you know, but I can reach out to Mayor and Sullivan and ask the question if we need additional buses as to whether or not we can use them.
I mean, because if they were willing to donate the transportation when it was, we were all in this together trying to get the vaccine, a few of us communities are still stuck in this fight to get our people there. Now they got, they're going to get their vaccines in Brockton, so that's going to limit the expense in that area. So maybe Michelle Dubois, maybe reaching out to her with the understanding that, okay, part of your district issue was resolved, but we could still maybe use transportation.
Yep. So I'll reach out to them. The spirit of what he was attempting to do was to run a regional vaccination site out of Brockton. And so therefore, in theory, those BAC buses would have come to West Bridgewater, picked up residents in West Bridgewater and brought them to Brockton. So now the difference will be, would you be willing to provide that service to pick up a West Bridgewater resident and drive them to Marshfield? You know, that's obviously a lot different of a scope, but I will be more than happy to ask that question.
Pay for it through the CARES Act.
We can. We don't, we don't have that much left, but yes, we, we do have the, we have some funds still available, but yes.
Could we ask the state to at least help us with grouping appointments so that it would make this process more efficient?
I don't know how they would do that. I mean, my point is they don't know that you're going to log online, I'm going to log online, you're going to log online. We might log online at seven hours apart. So how would they then group as being West Bridgewater residents?
Well, I mean, if we.
What they would have to do, and I don't think they'll do this, I'll be more than happy to send the information. I think what they would have to do, for lack of a better term, is this is a West Bridgewater time slot.
Right.
You know, noon to six on a Saturday. I don't see them doing that because they just want to get people vaccinated. And I'd be honest with you, if you read the memo, their memo is, our goal, meaning this is the administration, our goal is to make sure that you are within thirty miles or a forty-five minute drive somewhere. I think what they're saying is, look here, there's a life and health death that situation. You can figure out a forty-five minute drive. I think that's what actually they're saying. Whether I agree with it or not, that's what the message is. And so I think that they're, I'm not going to say that they're going to be insensitive, but I think they've kind of drawn a line. We're going to put you within thirty miles or forty-five minutes and we're setting it up, we're paying for it, we're doing all that. You just log online and you come. And then we know that there are some people that are going to be shut in. They're not, they don't have cars. They don't have the ability to drive. Hopefully as we get lower in age, that gets minimized more. They claim as of this past week that they have vaccinated fifty percent of all eligible seventy-five and over that have requested it. So I'm assuming that that number is going to continue to trend down. But there are some people that are thirty-five years old that don't have a license and can't drive. That does exist. Well, you know, and I think what they're hoping, again, I'm putting words in their mouth and I hate doing that, but I think what they're hoping is that person's going to have a sister or a brother or a cousin or somebody and they're going to bring them and they'll get vaccinated at the same time. That's my guess.
Well, it's discouraging, but I think what was also even more discouraging is when we were gearing up and hoping that we were going to get vaccines. And then, then we were told, no, you're probably not going to get them. But other towns were getting certain amounts. And the impression was that West Bridgewater was getting any and told you weren't going to get any. Same message Halifax got, but then they suddenly received vaccines. So if the state's taking a position that only these twenty cities are going to get it, that's unfortunate. I don't think it's a good decision. I think it's a poor decision for the seniors who are in a, are unable. Or it's just a difficult process for them to get to Marshfield or to Attleboro. But if, if that's their decision, there's nothing we can do. But if that's their decision, there's nothing we can do, except disagree with it.
Yeah, and I, I entirely share the same thoughts. And again, I can tell you, part of the frustration is, we all feel like we've been working really hard running in place now for two weeks. You know, and that came at the expense of other things on behalf of this board or on behalf of this town that didn't get done. You know, that's unfortunate, that's not fair as either. So anyway, that is the update on it. What we have done, because again, Selectmen raised, you would, you would requested this, but I also think, because we want to try to show that we are doing everything we can on behalf of our local residents. We have partnered with a facility that will do testing on February 27th and February 28th. It will be done at the Public Safety Building. And, and so it'll be those two days. Right now, we are expecting it on Saturday, the 27th, it would be from 8:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. And on the 28th, it would be in the, in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. So we will have testing and we'll do what we can to help people out with that.
Will this be rapid testing or the PRC?
PCR.
PCR.
I do not know that answer, it's, it's done by a private company. I do not know that answer.
All right. Even though there's fewer cases, it seems like there's a lot more exposure. Every day I heard here from someone else, so I was exposed to someone, now I need to quarantine for five days, and then I need to get tested. And I know the insurance companies are paying for COVID testing if you have symptoms. But I'm hearing that it's hit or miss if you don't have symptoms. And the test for the rapid is $160 to $200. And then for the, is it PCR or PRC?
PCR.
PCR. It can be another $200 on top of that. So it's pretty pricey if you just want to go to work to do it on your own. So I think this is a good move.
Next is just really an FYI. The mosquito control budget is not a budget that you vote on or see. This is administered through the Plymouth County. And this comes as part of our state assessment. So they always talk and boast about what they do with local aid, but they never talk about the fact that they still assess West Bridgewater almost $1 million. As part of that $1 million is the mosquito control budget. And I'm only bringing this up because I just want people to be aware that the assessment this year will be $40,622. It's only a $1670 increase, not a big increase, but it's a 4.3% increase. And again, I just want to highlight that because I know in a state where we have Proposition 2.5, I always hear, well, this should be simple. No expenses go over 2.5 because you can't raise more than 2.5, and we won't have any issues. Well, here's, this is from the state. You know, we have no control over this. Our retirement assessment will be 8.3% this year on a $2.5 million budget. That's a lot of money. We have no control over it. So again, just as an indication to the board and FYI to the people who are listening, there is some costs that are just outside of our control. And the last is, is an update on the pilot negotiations committee. I had put in your packet, I had, I had alluded to this when we named the committee, that we weren't sure that a pilot was still a legal mechanism to allow a private developer to spend a couple of million dollars upfront, fix a roadway infrastructure project, and then we would reimburse him through a tax process on a building that he would eventually build. Town council has reviewed and vetted it, and he has come to the conclusion that we cannot use that as a mechanism. In the meantime, the developer is still interested in trying to move forward. So instead of meeting as a pilot committee, because there's nothing we can do at this point, is that he is now meeting with Chris Iantelli as DPW Director, Bill Lucini as Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Hugh Hurley as Chairman of the Planning Board. He's just meeting with those three at this point to determine what a scope of the project is. Chris is instrumental because it's town roads. Ian, whether it's going to be permits at the ZBA level or the planning board level, Hugh and Bill would have to be involved. So the game plan at this point, because he could always choose to self-fund this. I know he doesn't want to. I know he's going to make every effort not to.
Oh, he wants to.
Of course we do. But he wants this project. So let him come up with a scope that makes sense to the permitting boards and to the person who oversees the roads. And then he can come back, and then he can say, okay, this is how much I think it's going to cost. I'm willing to pony up this, how much are you willing to spend? Is there a different mechanism? I've asked town council now to review the possibility of a TIF. In order to have a TIF, he needs to have somebody that's going to be there as a tenant. He says he doesn't have one yet, but he really wants this project. It's hard to believe he really wants this project if he has nobody in mind. So instead of being reactive, I said, let's be proactive, let's spell out the entire process and be prepared and be ready. So as soon as I know more, I'll let you know. I just want to let you know the pilot committee is not here.
No, the members have been?
Everybody's been informed. And the last thing is, I just want to let you know before you guys say anything, there is not going to be a need to go into executive session this evening.
So must there's anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
The second?
Second.
August in favor?
Can I hear you?
Anderson, yes?
Raise yes. That is the end of this reading.